Uh, good evening, everyone. We will begin this journey, this journey. It's always a bit of a journey. This meeting, uh, the City Market Committee Commission, May twenty first. We will start with the order roll call, Commissioner Prueville, if you can start us off, please.
Boy, Prueville here.
Margaret Rayner here.
Phil Turner here.
You need your calls this year?
Christine Crain here.
Steve Lawrence here.
Kevin Black here.
Very copy.
And Sarah Puck is here. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So.
All in favor? All in favor?
Alright.
Oppose? Alright. Uh, any corrections or additions to the minutes from May seventh? If I consensus over your conclusions? Good. Okay, any conflicts of interest? Or do you have two special land use from, um, your extent, or do you have any conflicts of interest? Yeah, you should be wrong.
Yes, I'm, uh... Oh, the wonderful Talanda. But there, I sold that property.
Oh, we're talking about the extension request?
Yep.
Yeah, okay. Thank you for that. Appreciate that. Um, any other... ...interests? Okay. Alright, so we will begin our first public hearing for O one S U P, O five twenty four. And, um, a light manufacturing facility proposal, located at twenty nine eighty eight Highway and N five fifty three. Um, please staff who would give an overview of the...
Staff has reviewed the special land use permit for a one-story building that will have light manufacturing. In the... Was the staff file review analysis, which indicated that light manufacturing is special land use and mixed-use zoning district. And the light manufacturing requirements in Article six, and the applicant had their narrative response to that section, and a special land use review, and then the site plan review requirements. Attached to that was the special land use application. This is their narrative response to the Article six requirements for light manufacturing. Their site interview application. Then they are currently narrative for requesting more parking spaces over maximum. That's on the official page. Staff comments? And then the applicant's responses to those comments? The area map, the parcels outlined in blue. And the block map, again, the parcels outlined in blue. Photos of the site. And then their site interview. Do you have any questions for staff?
Sorry, the, um, Cleveland Cliffs. Cleveland Cliffs, uh, easement is short across the property. Is that one of the old Chris... Usement's... No? He just said, "Two thousand dollar distributions." That's kind of hard. Maybe something here decided to be...
Yeah, I think the applicant, I saw some nodding, so maybe they're, they're coming up next, so maybe go there and prepare for that. Any other questions for staff with this structure? Okay, well, with that, we welcome the applicant. If you want to come up and speak, though, and that actually kind of gave us a little bit of an overview of the project.
Sure. Good evening, everybody. Hi, I'm Bud Bradley. I'm the construction manager at Longyear, representing the project. Uh, thanks for, uh, everyone, uh, and community members here and support the project. The brief overview is a thirty thousand square foot, uh, light manufacturing, uh, facility. It's going to be a pre-engineered metal building, uh, and it's going to be utilized for able-to-do expansion, uh, needs, basically. Production is driving that need. And, um, this is the proposed site. And just looking to really answer any questions that you might have a little bit more in depth about the project. I guess to answer your question, sir. Uh, the, the easement, uh, was aimed by Cleveland Cliffs. It's our understanding that it was transferred to OpCo and then A T C. We have been in contact with all three entities, uh, how the easement was recorded or lack of power was recorded. A little bit of a mystery to us, ourselves included, but what we're trying to have done is a planned de-plantation. To just ensure that it's removed from the burden of the ground. Uh, is there any other questions, I guess, I can just, in particular, that I can answer?
There are no questions.
Is there any in the easement right now?
Um, o- other than, uh, the proposed parking lot?
No, I...
Oh, no, it, it, uh, the language of the easement dates back to the early nineteen hundreds. Um, there, it was a, it was a power line transmission easement. Uh, I've walked the site, so my knowledge is absolutely nothing.
Nothing underground.
Nothing underground.
Yes, I'm wondering if, uh, as the forwarded of this property, having plans to relocate the existing bike trails.
We have a good working relationship with N T N. They are aware of what trails are going to be impacted. Um, and we're working with them, uh, just in conjunction for planning purposes. Uh, there will obviously be a pause to those trails during construction. Uh, but at this time, it's a little bit to be determined as to exactly where they'll be rerouted or how.
Could you give us like a little bit of a sense, um, I'm not familiar with the whole, uh, critical manufacturing, what they're going to be doing? I noticed in the plans, there was like a blasting, polishing room, wet processing, but no idea what, what are they making? Can you give us a little sense of what's going on at this point?
I can give you a, a very rough overview. Uh, I, I don't want to do it any injustice, so, um, do you have, uh, any, uh, finding manager to speak to that, Rob, if you don't mind?
Yes, well, the wet process is the, the, the city base. And what's your name? Excuse me, Robert Kenny, you know, that's what he writes, engineer flight manager. So he has CNC machining, so, uh, blades and mills. From a blasting standpoint, it's all in cabinets, and it's, um, this blast be... Exit the building, so. Clean up and take care of that through a disposal process. Wet process is just cleaning, uh, both parts, usually the city base type of cleaners, dumping, um, acid. We do use oil in our machines, but again, we recycle that, that's off-site, so.
Right, ready manufacturing?
So we do implants, both instruments from that device. Uh, similar to resolve medical, more of the times.
Okay.
So machine develop as well, so we have engineering team that develops surgeries and instrumentation.
Any other questions about operations or... Question that would be...
I, I should probably say that I must, because resident of N T N, we pay our bill every week, and we have a lot of interesting news, new interestingness, as they come up through the hardwood, uh, purchase. Do you have a written agreement with N T N or a, uh, a G O C to replace the trails or sort of a guarantee that you guys are...
I'm not privy to any, uh, existing lease agreements, uh, with the N T N Trail Network. All I know is that there is a consistent working relationship with N T N, um, at this time. There, there is no actual guarantees or anything like that, just again, at this time, that... Sir.
Any other questions? Okay, well, thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Okay, thank you, everybody.
We may have, we might have a question later, but...
Oh, nothing to be here, thank you.
Okay, so the next step is, uh, before our public project, if you receive. Alright, and, uh, would anyone from the public like to provide testimony on this project? Please state your name and your address.
Hey. Ken Rushka, Marquette Gulf Country Club. One thousand seven five Willow Street, I'm on board directors. Thank you for your time. We were put in contact with, uh, the Longyear here, Able Group, and, uh, they had a paper reach out to us, and were very, uh, very willing to work with us with regard to what we're trying to do here, so the golf course. Very large green space, so we're very, very into recreation, green space, and working with the N T N Trails. We've got a lot of networks for our property, those connectors, I'd say, which seem to be pretty critical to them, so we're very supportive of the N T N. We're supportive of this project. We spoke to the, to the manager who's not here tonight, and he seemed to be developing a light industrial, more tech, that seemed to fit in with a campus that we put in, that's for golf course, and we were satisfied with what they told us, and we're here as a supportive, positive meeting opportunity, so.
Thank you. Uh, is there anyone else who would like to provide comments?
Well, I'm Lori Housework with the N T N, second director, uh, sixty seven Crane Street. Um, so yes, we've been in conversations with, with Longyear, obviously. We've noticed it's been coming for five or six years. I can't tell when we're getting together at this point. Um, the city before they sold it had an opportunity to put a permanent easement, which was not true for this property, so luckily we have a landowner that is very actively working with us to make sure trails are preserved, so with this project, we will have to, we're losing, the, the critical piece that we're losing is snowbank trail connectivity. Um, with this development, so we will have to move that trail or find another route, um, up higher to maintain that. Um, and we'll be losing a bit of single track that we're hopeful that it can be reconnected, but it is not script over the system as the... The snowbank is, um, it just gets tight in there because of there's rock with on the city property, and then you move down the hill, uh, towards the site, so the train really kind of dictates how we can construct the trail, and of course, not just the trail, we just want to make sure we preserve the, the, uh, the characters, you know, that we feel that we, we enjoy on the trails, so, you know, anything that can be done to maintain the train or maintain the natural buffer areas, we're really looking to, to the trails, so. Thank you. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer the rest of the trails.
Thank you. Alright, anyone else, uh, wanting to provide some public comment? Okay, um, that's time for mission discussion. Um, does anyone want to, uh, make a motion to suspend the moves for discussion?
I'll still... I'll say.
All in favor?
Alright, bye.
Commissioner Lori, wanted to start us off?
Well, um, I'm not sure whether it's, to make this, um, in a one region or the next one with the road, but, um, that's shown proposed right away from the public room, but that does not include turnaround of the heavy, which could be required for ball vehicles and, um, flare trucks and like, and I think the past practice has been to require a temporary easement for something like that. How it's, uh, parking lot, where load rail items, I'm just wondering if that's something that's still in the works between the city and developer, have staff get to that? Guess we haven't discussed that yet, but... Okay, and I, a second question was that, um, the, um, mentions a couple times in their appearance that the schedule for this is undetermined at this point, yet, um, appears to me that M D A has a current, um, known paid project underway under way of the state, um, code. You know, we cut from the store connection, isn't done before the day, because you're probably being committed for several years. I guess, anybody interested, whether that would be related with M D A, make sure that the project is installed by the, like, bad timing there?
Yeah, but I'm hoping that's a question for maybe engineering or the project, uh...
Sure. Uh, hoping the team of the city on that, uh, the general intent would be, uh, to, uh, construct the road and then turn it over to, to the city, uh, eventually after construction. Uh, we're not holding any permanent income, I've got, as of yet, um, so I'm not exactly sure where that might fall, sir. Uh, however, scheduling, um, that we're at least trying to hit or propose, uh, right now is to potentially break ground as soon as, uh, mid-July. Uh, with substantial completion of the building sometime in the spring or summer.
I guess I would encourage that contact with, uh, construction office and M D A and try to, um, a timeframe on them, they'll give you a deadline on when you have to, uh, open, cut, connect the exits in the store, and if you just extend it out, then you're going to stop there. We move a major road block to your project.
Very understood, thank you. Just like to add that, uh, M D A has reviewed their site plan for the access to the highway and as well as the hemlocks development process tree. So this would just be a matter of, um, they, they, they already know what's going on there. We'll just, uh, maybe some coordination.
Okay, I don't believe the, um, plans we got show the, um, locations across in five five three. And since this, this road street doesn't land up, or the street doesn't land up, which one was called maybe, uh, drives?
No, they, the, the two are offset, the, the new hemlock, the hemlocks drive, which is already displaced, it's already been, that road is already rotten. They're offset by, uh, I think a few hundred feet. So, um...
But it should be a couple of hundred feet between them.
They, they like the offset, M D A likes the, the offset distance, they're, they're happy with the way this is going to work out. And they have the site plan for the Able Medical Facility, so.
Just to clarify for newer, I mentioned this, the hemlock property, isn't that the thirty-one seventy?
Yes.
So there's a housing development.
So this driveway for Able is going to be to the north of the people, you're feeding the other.
Okay, I believe that means there are no questions at this time, thank you.
Great, uh, any other questions, others? Well, that's probably the best way to proceed then, I guess, is to go through the, um, criteria and section. And also, please, uh, remember to look at that part of your class. Oh, alright, we should talk about that. Let's look at that, um, so that was, uh, what gave you that? And then we can go over the next section. There it is.
Page twenty-eight.
Alright, so yeah, just trying to get into the, uh, parking. What, you come in, propose bus, would you?
The planning permission has to look at their narrative and decide if you would agree to, um, have more than twenty percent of max spaces. If you feel like their, um, argument for it.
Okay, did everybody get a chance to check out the parking plan here? Any thoughts? Any thoughts to, yeah, Commissioner Prueville?
Yeah, I mean, I've worked at the plan. And first off, it's back in the woods, no matter what, it'll get it's hundred twenty-nine feet off the street, off the right-of-way, off the street. The nearest point you're going to ever see it, and that's their metal container. Scrap metal. They're climbing up about fifty, sixty feet from the bottom to the top. Climb up the hill, they're putting the thing on the very top of the building. And I think that's coming on the best plans I've seen. In regards to parking, I think when we reduce the parking drastically, kind of downsized parking lots, they probably know better what they need for parking because they're going to have employees. It's going to take a certain number of employees to run the place. They're probably all going to have their own cars, I doubt they're going to get on the bus on third street, get out there. So I think the need for the parking is a lot of problems as far as I can see. The extra parking.
Thanks, Commissioner Prueville. Any else got a follow-up on the parking?
Is this your current estimate, sources for future planning, uh, sixty-four, about this pause? This is for current planning with, uh, with some expected growth, uh, with a thirty thousand square foot facility. Uh, so there is a potential, uh, for new hires and new employees, um, R H R employees. Doing their best to keep up and trying to anticipate that. Um, so again, it, it's based on the, uh, the thirty members that are currently down at the Sawyer facility, uh, on day shift, and then there's also the night shifts. But, you know, at times or company visitors, uh, there's a very half parking on some occasion basis. Um, and, uh, to your point as well, sir, uh, you know, if, if you like that area often following, that you might never even be able to see this facility. Uh, if that's, if that helps.
And have you guys considered being bike spaces since you're so close to the Sotres, for those who do live in Marquette and want to bike after work?
Want to bike after work, I mean, it, we're, we're trying to, you know, there, a lot of Able employees are very excited about being located close, proximated to bike trends, so, you know, we're, we're going to try and, uh, make this as a community-based project as possible, so that they can really indulge in all those activities. Hopefully answered the questions, okay.
Uh, how, if I may ask, what percentage of your employees is working in Marquette?
Uh, I would, I would, these, these estimates are roughly...
Okay, well, are dependent in, uh, the Darni, then when, um, other chat, location.
But also more takeout.
So more sustainable, less change in cost, is your answer?
Okay.
Great, are there thoughts, comments, discussions? So, so I think, feel, it feels like there's consensus to agree with what was proposed here on parking and, uh, we're going with that, eh? Are you no opposition, I think would solve that, or you would, Andrew? Alright, let's go on to the standards and figure, page seven, the packet. Staff, do you have some comment from there, we might want to discuss, or just at least touch on all different sections of, um, fifty-four point fourteen oh three, the special land use standards, essentially, so let's just walk through these, um, I think this will be a quick, quick conversation, but the first one there intended as only district, do we feel this is in the light manufacturing district, do we agree that this is an appropriate use for that?
This is then mixed use, is it?
Oh, we have, I'm sorry, I was going to mention something else. Uh, mixed use, we're good with that? Light manufacturing in. Okay. Alright, uh, use of adjacent lands. Some, um, evidence here, some single family, local family structures. We're good with this? It says then with adjacent uses. Physical appearance and structures, I think Commissioner Prueville made a point that it's not going to be super visible, um, the highway, right? A lot of development, we can, uh, we can, but we have this? Yes. Okay, landscaping, there's a lot of, um, some comments from city staff, but it's not going to get us close.
Yes, and they're going to show on the plan that most of the existing, um, involved by the community, that stuff, it's just, they may need to add possibly some to the new road, but they may be leaving existing as well, that, uh, personal, so, so yes, we discussed with them and, uh, we are good with their responses.
Okay, and I noticed there were, uh, for engineering too, that they think that they had a good result, but it's not good for the conversation.
All staff are good with that, applicant's responses to it.
Thank you. Um, so landscaping, we're good. Operations of use? Go with this one? Too much going on over there. Uh, time of use, physical and economic relationship. Wait four hours. Okay, um, number of persons or employees? Discuss that, parking to the other.
Just a little, you can respond to, uh, any, uh, other persons. I understood you charted the part of the credit, basically only have a full staff there, a day shift, putting out, or playing, for right now. Your vision, it sounds like going to, um, multiple correction shifts.
Currently, we run a day shift until five o'clock, then a night shift, two to about midnight, um, that's Monday to Thursday. The plan is going forward, maybe heading to Friday night, but, uh, again, consistent with those hours.
I thought it was probably a couple of...
Yeah, we're just going through at night, we have roughly six people at night. That staff with them.
You could, but with thirty people to work, travel, and shows.
Yeah. Day shift as our engineering, our quality department, sales, so we have more departments running during the day, at night, strictly manufacturers to have, keeping machines running, so it's more like duty. It's not skeleton-type crew, so keep equipment running, so. All my activities, third day shift.
Isn't that one, uh, number person employees? Okay, moving on, miniature pedestrians regulation. Staff just know that traffic volume will increase a little bit. But it doesn't seem to that, eh?
Speaking speculation, is there any thought that the owners of property will be called beyond the, the current proposal, uh, to simple family homes, and further that will increase their, uh, more?
We speak to, yeah, plans for future traffic, how you...
At, at this time, any future development is really just speculation at this point, we just go through the proper, uh, city, uh, planning for that, but...
We have to come back.
Of course, of course, uh, at this time, again, any, any further, uh, expansion besides, uh, just the three thousand square feet, and, um, you know, it is really, uh, not anything truly being considered at this time, or at least, at least planned forward to a point where we can, we can speak to it.
Uh, I do have a question, regarding the move from when to here, uh, are you guys in a deal with that, not, uh, moving the chains?
Uh, moving, uh, is, is in the works of being coordinated, um... Uh, moving, uh, is, is in the works of being coordinated, um, right now, uh, we have been focusing more on the design. However, gears are shifting, uh, for the anticipation that we will be completed sometime in 2025. Has not been coordinated with MDA yet, but, uh, it will be.
Sure. On that last question, I don't know if members here at all saw what the plan for pedestrian circulation there. It's, uh, not a technical sidewalk. Six foot, would you call maintenance, sure.
Yeah, do you want to expand on that, I had a question about that, what about that typical white?
It's kind of what Marquette Township has done in, uh, a lot of their roadrunners, provide, um, sort of a multi-use kind of a thing that not, has been separated from the curb, but it's basically a patch of the curb. What I consider as a, as a temporary facility or a long-term facility is Marquette Township has done for sidewalk needs to use. So for the immediate future, that's the plan, is to embed in front of the 553 access to the facility.
There is a sidewalk on that part of the 11th, that one, that one, that one.
There's a bike there. Bike cap is in the office, that's true.
Um, okay, any other thoughts on the pedestrian circulation? You're there? Okay, um, physical characteristics of the site, there was quite a bit of engineering comments, isn't it, if you want? Got that? We're good, we're confident in the engineer, okay, yeah.
Uh, we've like, uh, counted in there, uh, with the character of the, uh, cross corners, the city was really interested in easements or, or ownership of just a portion of the, the right of way. And yet, if you want properly, you need cross corner, you have to have access to leave it, help it. So I guess I was a little confused by that.
Sure, so the intent is the city would take over only the, the stormwater system that, um, capture on, on the public program, like that, rents like the cross corners that capture water, the, the, the detention ponds. Those that be private, they don't, they, they, they.
I understand, you know, school, even parking, but there was a number of corners, so maybe they just carried, uh, existing rails or, or smaller vehicles, um, and they, they picked up both sides of that, those right away, I think, and just stretched outside.
So you're talking about a corner, that section?
Yes. And I saw that.
Any other thoughts on the physical characteristics of the site? Uh, public services, like everything are around Kathy, all of their, uh, letters and letters, so. Okay, environmental factors? Do you have a question about the titanium shavings and the recycling of that? I know I talked about, like, you work with a contractor to recycle that, or work with the toad in that?
Yeah, we, um, we just can do a dry apparatus, so we store them, they'll operate inside the building. We drain all the oil off, and a shipper come in, we, we have one that picks them up and toads it line, and takes some down to be, um, maybe the same.
Like in Chicago?
Yeah, so that's, we, 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 we do that for a state, it's called, uh, metal shavings, uh.
Thanks, any other questions about the environmental factors and potential issues?
How often are these, uh, shavings turned out currently?
Currently, we run that for one schedule, so they give us as much time to reclaim as much oil as possible, every use of machines involved, so.
Any other questions about any environmental factors? What is that? Site area, potential future extension period, this is, I'm sure got, it raised that. Requiredness of the community, it sounds like there may, it doesn't mean that opera is helping, especially the power, but. Potentialities, but, um, in terms of this project, we're satisfied with how things are set up. Uh, additional neighborhood factors? Issues from safety, lights there. Good? Okay, and then, um, city compliance with the master plan. Yeah, so does it have mixed use, we haven't talked about that one before. Any other thoughts on relationship with the community master plan? We're good? All right, um, Andrew, if you want us to go through the section 54.02 as well, or are we good with the, the name standards? Feeling like things are aligning here, uh, would anyone like to make a motion or add to the discussion?
Sure. After only the public area review of the site plan set dated April third, uh, 2024 supplemental communication, staff report analysis, 401 dash SGP dash 05 dash 24, the city commission requires. The request meets the intended requirements of the land development code, section 54.1, 403, 541402, 54.67, and purive approves 01 dash SGP dash 05 dash 24, with the following condition, that in the minute plan, the city, all of the staff.
Sorry, do you want one second? No, oh my gosh, sorry guys, sorry.
I have one second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks. Oh. I think that, I think that was implied in that, is it?
Yes, that was probably the staff.
Okay, great, um, so moving on, the next thing on the agenda is there's a public, um, hearing regarding O1 DOA open by a normal man developing the amendments, um, so, if you'd like, we'll turn this on to that.
Okay, so, uh, we have in the packet all of the amendments that we've, uh, been working on for past four months, five months, uh, concluded with, um, work session with the city commission last week. And, um, unless there's questions, somebody could make a motion to, to move this to the city commission for public hearing. If there are questions, then we would talk about any of those concerns.
Okay, um, we'll see, first we'll go through your headcount, editor, so. Is there any public testimony, just like an assessment of our public hearing process? Would anyone like to provide any public testimony on the proposed amendment to go in on the, that were in today's agenda? Okay, seeing that, um, and the issue should be assessed, do you want to make a motion to suspend those for session?
Okay, motion, yeah.
All in favor?
Aye. Um, at risk of, um, back from day edge, I don't know if this is just an oversaying. Uh, specifically with the, uh, screening of dumpster, it says that cedar is allowed as a cover on the, um, gates. But then it also says that it must be treated or womanized, my understanding is that cedar is not a, a vertical screen, but it's allowed as a use. So, okay, we found us this.
Would you confirm, staff, we strip, uh, strip the part that says treated?
Okay, so they add cedar, cedar, um, womanize or. There's the one on the screening that's, that's a different page.
No, I wouldn't interpret that meaning.
And on number two, and then quota dates. If wood is used, it must be pressure treated or womanized. Or cedar.
Or.
Yeah.
What other than cedar?
We also have a new, patches like that, like little things, because we have talked pretty extensively about these changes. So, do we have?
Well, I'm looking at page three, or page two to start with. Where you're defining a family. I'm a little confused. Uh, any group individual living together as a single house, keeping unit, functional equivalent of a family or residence, or a close group social, economic, physiological, commitments to each other, whose relationship is of a continuous, not trans domestic character. What are you saying there, Andrew?
This is the definition that we've had in the book for a long time, and, um, it, um, captures everything that we think we need to allow for, um, the Fair Housing Act to be enforced effectively. Oh, what, what is your specific?
Well, I just thought it was a long. Kind of doesn't make sense in some ways to me, because I know there was a group that they called a family. When they went, when they went to court, it was determined that they were not family. That was by pathways.
I can't speak to the case, but a functional equivalent of family is a thing that's recognized by a lot of courts, that are people like this says that have close relationship and commitments to each other, and they support each other, or they are cohesive kind of unit. I, I know the home you're thinking of, um, of a lot of, uh, several adults that have disabilities that cannot function by themselves and have caregivers that, um, are hired to come and help them with the, any number of daily needs that they have. They were determined not to be a family. That, that may be, I, I, I don't.
Anyway, that's, aside from what I'm thinking, let's just let it go.
But. Correction, I do recognize functional families, that's why it's in.
Well, let's go to page three. Where you have the definition of a quad flex and a tri flex. And again, you refer to that. A four family house is a quad flex. But a five unit would be a five apartment building, or five buildings would be called units, right?
Yeah, they're not mutually exclusive, uh, tri flex and quad flex are still multi-family.
They're all multi-family.
Correct. But we're, we didn't have a definition for tri flex or quad flex in there, so we were creating one.
But my comment, my only comment is, why don't we call them units instead of family? Because a quad flex, under our current deal here, it goes through. But they have 20 people living there, unrelated. It would be the most financially wise thing to do if you had a quad flex, because you could get 2500, $3,000 per unit, if you rent it to a family, you might get 1500.
So, the way I read this, it says, under tri flex, three family house, meaning three families, as we define family. Can live in the building, with each dwelling unit physically separated. So we address family, and we address dwelling units. It's clear to me that we've got this defined like we should have.
Okay, families, five people living together, because they got a common thing in there. But then when you go on with what you're saying, in the definitions of a family over there, you kind of break it apart, and I don't understand it. You've got, and you go back to page two. Where you get to a functional equivalent of family should not include any organization such as a club, fraternity, sorority, monastery.
So each dwelling unit, you can think of family as, as a, or, or, could be any, any of those combination of things in the same building. You have a functional family in one unit, a traditional nuclear family in another unit, family of 400 rated, 500 rated, whatever the number is of that in another unit.
Okay, I guess the definition was, where I'm confused is, if I find four guys, I wanna go out and order all of what he said, and somehow we're a unit. Is that true?
If you're living together, and you're paying rent, and you're functioning as a single housekeeping unit, you're a family, I believe.
Okay, so what thought?
You're not necessarily functional family, but if you're.
Okay.
All right, I wanna, together, that turned on the speaker.
No, that's fine with me, I don't care. It's just, and then the other one would be on page 23, that's the other question I had. When it gets into dog runs. And you say, okay, if a dog run can be in the side yard. However, it has to be how many feet away from the property line?
Yes, this is already in the city.
10 feet from the adjacent property line, and how many people have a side yard line in Marquette, and 10 feet away from the neighbor?
This is what we discussed before, it's exact language from the city code plan, and we're just bringing it into here so people won't have to jump over the city code. So we presented this to you guys at the work session, we stated we're just bringing in city code language of the requirements of dog runs. They have to get meat with these products, we're just making it easier for people that don't know.
Okay. That's a whole other thing to do.
Thanks, anybody else, can we, how was that, did you go?
The main concern I heard in the walkway, uh, joint meeting with the city commission last week, other than the, um, daycare setting, which was cleared out, was the height of a tower mounted wind turbine in a nasty 66 feet. One of the city commissioners was pretty concerned that that was pretty high, and according to others, uh, here tonight, uh, walkway with that same concern. My, my opinion is, as a tower mounted wind turbine is, has to come before the planning mission for it to be erected as a special land usage, and cannot be erected. as a special land use, and cannot be erected in a residential area. It was a pretty strict sound, you know, we're gonna read decimals. I don't really think that that's gonna be a problem in a lot of ways, that was wondering if anyone else. I'd rather deal with it here before those that the city commission, but I personally have no problem with the way that was written. And, you know, just let it go.
And if I may, that's existing language that we're just moving from Article seven to Article six.
I was, I was just really wondering if anybody else had that same concern. Is it the tower that can I exceed sixty feet or the maximum height of the... This is on page twenty-four.
Usually we're talking about maximum height, but this stuff is going to be maximum height, completely. Yes, the tallest portion of that, just like cell towers, we look at tallest portion.
Okay. And it does have to get around surrounding trees and, um, buildings and our potential, so I think it's very, very much that could be impacted to what is... These must get a longer relied, and will be non-residential, never longer relied, non-residential. It's supposed to confirm the land commission as a special. So, I, I just suppose this is an issue.
Because I believe the, uh, it has to be the full height of the structure away from home property units, so it's...
So, the land commission is going to be keeping it from that one ninety-sixty-six feet. Just getting that, and then box comments. Um, and this, I think would be a motion, I think, to present to the, to the commission. All right, if anyone would like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. After review of the draft land development code amendments presented as case zero-one-Z-O-A-oh-five-two-zero-twenty-four, after conducting a public hearing and careful consideration of the contents of the draft LDC amendments, the planning commission finds that the draft LDC amendments are consistent with the recommendations, goals, and policy objectives of the community master plan. Uh, comply with section fifty-four, uh, one-four-oh-five of the land development code, and therefore are justified and appropriate, and therefore should be approved by the city commission and revise the following amendments that, uh, Cedar be allowed as a non-creedent, and that's eight. All right.
Second, is there a second? I have a second. All right, sure, yeah, all in favor?
I am.
Okay, moving along, and our agenda, are there citizens wishing to address the commission on any of the items? Well, seeing none, um, we'll move on to new business. Um, we will discuss oh-one, S-T-R, oh-five, twenty-four, which is the, uh, ableway new project proposal.
So, the city engineer, Midco, is going to be in the project, the details, we survive it, and... Sure, so I'll run through the, uh, the details on the public road and the facilities for, uh, the ableway. Within the proposed development. Proposed driveway of sixty-six feet, uh, standard. Uh, proposed road would be twenty-eight feet, back, curved back, or twenty-four feet of, uh, asphalt roadway. Um, it's a, parking on one side as a local legal street. The community master plan, um, has talked about there'd be a six-foot wide main strip or pedestrian path on one side of the road. Um, yeah, on-street shared parking on one side of the road. As far as utilities, uh, servicing the site, uh, standard eight-inch ductile and water main, uh, in D C San Francisco. A portion of the storm sewer would be public, uh, especially that, or especially the storm sewer that services only the, the public roadway. So, this, this cross-section roadway is, uh, one that's been used, uh, hollow farms, a lot of farm across the road, granite link, charisals, uh, works well for, uh, wheelblowing streets. And still allows for, uh, parking on, on the road itself. So, we just got some maps in here of the general site, and I've, uh, prepared enough of the block map that shows you the... Now, so this is a, a site out here, this would be the, the public portion of the roadway. Here is the, uh, proposed cross-section, so we have a both-in-traveling, a twelve-foot shared driving and traveling, uh, multiple curve on each side, and then you can see the, uh, pedestrian, not motorized area on one side of the road. And I guess one thing to note is that if, you know, if, if there was any speculative future expansion, parking could be removed, um, one side of the road and, uh, the traffic, or the, the road wouldn't, uh, handle, handle more traffic. So, it gives some flexibility there, and so...
Second, can you repeat that, uh, we got rid of one lane, there's one, two, three, four, five?
Well, I just said that if, if you were to remove parking on one side of the roadway, if there was ever like a higher, higher demand, uh, as far as vehicle traffic goes, I wouldn't anticipate that this would have a lot of on-street parking to start off with, um, grass and recreation. Is there, um, is there, um, people for full parking on the, um, title site?
Any questions for, um, please, Gavin?
Does this road have potential to be drawn through street, right in the condition?
There's some conservation easements that, uh, planning may go that down. I guess I'm not, I'm not sure, we, we're at on the west side here. That's, you know, conservation easements, but I thought there was issues there. That is, that is the township.
What do they, who the western, is that?
That's Parkway Township.
Oh, that's it?
Yeah. Well, yeah, I believe that's still, it's near the wellhead protection area, I'm not sure if it's actually built in the well.
Well, we are, the basketball right of the, you know, the intersection, so should us speak to the desire to have an interaction with working township along that, somewhere along that section. I know, you know, whether the county maybe having it greatly for processed rate models, and, and they don't have the capability issue of that, you know, that was resolved yet. Would have done, uh, connected with, with the check, you know. This would, that is, you know, have potential to script the bulk first, and still manage with, um, there's another, I, I think it's, uh, warning, it's, but, or anything's got, or whatever that one is up there, uh, opposite of the warning, it was nice, it's the western here, so I guess I'm just wondering if any coordination is occurring with working township, and, you know, and it hasn't varied, and I hear as much future traffic at this point. No.
I guess as of right now, there hasn't been any coordination, although I know that, uh, the ableway stipulation that any expansion is really speculative at this point. Where, uh, you know, they're, they're buying in, and, uh, you know, their plans for the rest of the site as well, so... But, it is a possibility, sometimes, I guess.
I would have, have these recommend to the, you know, quote unquote, our head township, and ask for discussion to determine whether this one is, is blocked, uh, as a possible road. Because I think, I think that's what talks about being an extension of divisions, you know. Topography would seem to have building that close to the place where the master plan comes from, rolling, is that what we should be, or...
But in many, I, I'm not sure that our, um, new master plan addresses that at all. And I wouldn't necessarily encourage it to. That's one of the most beautiful pieces of property in the county, probably, because it must be very sure we're doing it well there, but I, I know there is, you know, there's some, too track in there, and it's it's possible to put a road just about anywhere, but I'm sure it's extremely thorough. And I don't think it's in the plan.
Thank you.
Um, okay, I think that's it for city staff, unless there was any questions for staff? All right, uh, applicants, I mean, we have kind of talked about this before, but if you want to come up and add anything, opportunity to do so.
I really don't have any comments, unless I have any questions.
Okay, you may have any questions for the applicants? Correspondents on this one? What was on from this? Uh, a public testimony about the able, um, ableway that wrote here, proposed road. Public comments? Seeing none, um, commission discussion, any votes for discussion? All in caution, if people feel satisfied?
So, any choice?
It, it is the proposed name, it was, um, obviously the intent would be to turn over the road, I think, the construction to the city, but, um, able being the proposed flagship of, uh, this one. That is just one, because, uh...
Uh, in the other commission discussion, we usually need to suspend the rules, make a motion for discussion, and discuss. Renate a motion?
After review of the proposed cross-sections, uh, and associated background information for oh-one dash thirteen, S-T-R, dash, zero-five, dash, twenty-four, which enableway street concerning project, the planning commission finds this as a proposed question to be stated that, of the community master plan nearby, groups and street, uh, reconstruction, assigned as presented, um, as we said.
Great. Uh, motion by Commissioner Coles, anyone with a second?
I will say on that motion.
Like, all in favor?
All in favor.
Any votes? Okay, motion passes, thank you. Um, okay, we'll move on to the next new business, oh-three, it's not a new business, oh-three S U P, or oh-six three-two, an extension request for the new ones lying over there on, um, here there. Good feeling, thank you.
Since, um, Commissioner Prema has come with the bench, really, uh, on there for years, so we'll, we'll...
Sorry, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, um, city staff, do you want to get a feel of me on this one?
In the agenda packet is the attached correspondence from property owner Jeffrey Murray. He is requesting a second extension of the previously approved duplex loan, okay, at four-four-two, in the middle of the street. Project will currently expire on six, twenty-one, twenty-four, due to the first extension that was received. Attached were the, um, land permission notes for the original approval from, from June twenty-first, twenty-two. And then, we provided the land development code language that talks about the typical period. Um, if this is granted, this would be the last extension. But also, um, in the point here, we are, you know, with the land development code amendments, this may not be a special land use in the future, depending on, um, how the city commission. But still, given the timeline, we don't know, you know, what, how come that would be, um, when we recommended it, when he asked about it to discuss.
Um, don't think applicants will see it, or, um, any correspondence on this?
No.
All right, any public testimony on this case? All right, any mission discussion?
Would you suspend rules for this?
Great, and second?
I'll second.
All right, all in favor? Uh, right, can you hear that?
I, I can speak frankly, I don't want to do this project, I don't, I don't got this project not going ahead for the reasons I'm so clearly involved in starting before twenty-two. But I stated by the planning commission at that point, before twenty-two, there was no reason not to. And I think we are so proud, I don't say recently, of the planning commission.
Well, basically, certainly, it's really not how many units are next to you, it's who lives there, and how many have. And, and other than the fact that, um, because more people can live there, uh, I suppose the chances of having someone misbehave increases somewhat. But, um, this code was built with duplexes and triplexes in most neighborhoods, in most blocks, and, uh, all of my, that three generations, two generations beyond me have looked at duplexes in this town, and, uh, they don't know any problems in any of them, um. The number of units does not dictate who your neighbor is, it's, um, it's just an attempt to allow for more people to live within the city limits, and I think, based on that, neighbors can have a, um, pre-strategic influence of the behavior of their neighbors as well. They're disunited, uh, in Hollywood, so residents there behave, I think they influence that ways other than, you know, the project.
I would also add that the, uh, the intent, obviously, uh, things can change, but the applicant intends to occupy the unit. And so it is in his best interest to strictly seriously vet its potential renters, uh, because he doesn't want loud arrears in his own four walls. Um, that can change, but like Commissioner Lowry said, I think that it's about the people that live there. And there's a, a will in our community to see more duplexes and triplexes. And this might not even be an issue in less than two months. So, I'm with Mr. Lowry, we kind of have to, and I think the sentiment has changed.
All right, any further discussion? We haven't gotten any further correspondence from anyone, right?
I'd just like to say, as I read this out here in twenty-two, because I read it, it's more, um, worrying towards how streets are dangerous.
So, um, I'd like to be mentioned to people that actually do have complete streets for now. So if it's, um, just bring out and say, uh, mention that it is somehow the city to our people who have public users with how more people come into a certain area and create dangers on the streets, or because they're playing, directed into the complete streets for
Are you talking about the traffic, aren't you going to guide your words with the police car?
Yeah, I honestly, you went to the commission that we last week and tried to figure it out.
Okay. Okay, any other discussion or anyone like to make a motion?
Make motion that the planning commission approved the crossbar extension for K zero three dash S U P dash zero six dash two two, expiration eight eighteen thirty six, twenty one twenty five.
Second?
Second.
Hopefuss, all in favor? And you opposed? And, all right, motion passes. Grab, uh, read. Anyone to get ready? Uh, all right. He looked at his folks. He's got, he's got his glasses too, he's gonna look good.
One time, yes.
Uh, looking at, citizens wishing to address the commission on any non-agenda items?
Yes, Antonio Adama, eight thirty two, no, been issued a different mission. Um, so I just wanted to say, or hello, introduce myself here to the planning commission board. I am the recently appointed housing specialist in Marquette County. Um, I'm very excited about the work that we are undertaking. And it was a collaboration of a lot of groups. So just wanted to come and say hello and just kind of give you a little synopsis of what I'll do and what we're working on at the county land bank. Um, so the mission of this role is to really, um, help steward and be a catalyst for project and projects and housing developments that could be happening in our county. Um, helping all the communities of government if they wish to have the assistance. Also, more importantly, helping virgin developers and maybe some mid-sized developers too, that they need, um, resources, tools, knowledge, things of that nature. There is a lot of interest in helping the housing cause here in Marquette City and beyond. And one of my jobs is to make sure that they understand what goes into building. The price of construction skyrocketed last five years. There is grant funding that the state is rolling out. There's also opportunities for, uh, folks to, you know, gain some of those incentives to working with partnerships as well, with the land bank folks in the county. Um, so my job encompasses a lot, but in short of it, I just want to make sure I'm helpful as I can be. Um, and I'm here for you as a resource. So please don't hesitate to reach out. And I just want to, um, compliment the, the way that the meeting was ran tonight and, um, the questions that were asked. And, um, especially the staff with the L E C amendments. I was very actually excited about that, believe it or not. So I just wanted to say that, um, I compliment you for, um, making it a little bit smoother. With a lot of the, um, land development code updates that are happening, I think that will make it a lot easier for folks to look at potential options to develop, whether it's a triplex or a duplex by right now within certain zones. So, um, but that's the kind of leadership I think that we need across the company for folks to be looking at. So again, thank you. Just want to introduce myself. And if anybody has questions, please don't forget to chat out. We can find you on the land bank website or county website as well from the opposite. Thanks.
Thank you very much. It's really important work and we really appreciate what you're doing.
Thanks.
Um, okay, any correspondence reports? I hope we had any minutes or any background review. No trainings tonight, no work session. So that leaves us with, um, continuation comments. Bishop Dool, you want to pick us up? Any questions?
I don't know. Uh, I guess my question is, the city looking for taxes and yet we I think hassle people. My personality, I used to get mad, not much anymore. But I would have said, hell with the city. And I don't like that a township, but they hug me for coming out there with my business. You know, it's just crazy. I mean, if you look at what they paid twenty eight hundred something bucks. Got another couple hundred thousand in architectural fees and engineering. And then we sit here and say, eh, you know, they shouldn't have to wonder if the planning commission is going to approve a decent project like that. It's definitely going to be good for the city with the taxes that will be. Another comment I would have, which I've done many times is I wish we would look at Marquette and think about Marquette and not do what they do in Colorado, Driver City, or Ann Arbor. But of course, we don't have the capability to do that. So we have to copy. Which is literally a formative of other people's work. That's it.
I have no comment. Yeah, I was really happy to see that the ABEL development, they worked closely with the surrounding trails and the hallways.
Yeah, looking forward to the move closer to Marquette, to be able, um, really good for the local economy and, um, good job, Peggy Shannon, and the film company that covered it by long years. If you see here, that as well. Thank you, Antonio, for coming. Appreciate that, for the further plan. And I'm excited to keep working on the way with that code.
Um, I'd just like to say thank you for coming today. And, um, I really, um, am honored to be on this commission. And there's a lot of big learning that's happening and a lot of information that's coming through. Um, and I'm receiving and I'm just grateful for all the questions that everybody brings up across the board. Because I think that's very important to make sure that everybody's, um, questions, opinions, thoughts are heard. And so I'm very grateful for that.
Well, even though we're, we're, stated priority goals is housing, I think the higher priority goal is, uh, good paying jobs, manufacturing jobs, and extremely happy to see stuff moving into the city. We can say we, we need to make room for more housing, but we got very little room to accommodate new, uh, manufacturing jobs. And the power, the problem with it's to build there with, uh, I think it was about forty jobs total put together. So.
I'll say, uh, I'm happy to see manufacturing in the area. I will, uh, personally lament the loss of two stroke in the N T N. But, uh, I'll go right at it when I can. And I hope, hopefully, we'll see that, uh, ABEL and N T N will come to a solution as they mentioned in their comments tonight that we can relocate or find some agreements to continue using part of that property for trail systems. Because I think it's vital to our local economy as well.
I, I question actually here, Antonio, I think about home city thing this week, is it to make it plain to the people as well?
Okay. Yeah, I was trying to do something, but, uh, but.
Well, no, that's my pitch.
Sure. Uh, so this Thursday, um, morning, the much anticipated target market analysis is coming out to the public, to the report as we're flying up. Sharon from Land U C S A will be presenting a one hour tutorial. Um, so that target market analysis is open, uh, basically through all the boards and commissions. Um, I can forward a link to you, distribute that out, or I can forward it to staff, but there is space still. We have about sixty four registered so far. Um, we have certain capacity for more. Um, and then there is a lunch, uh, as well, but that lunch is not free. It's paid, a paid twenty five dollar entry. And we still have some spots for that. I think we have about fifty registered so far. So it's this Thursday at Northern from eight AM to about two thirty PM. So a lot of good information will come out of that. We'll do a split where we'll divide the proofs by region. Um, I think it's pretty market city centric. So, um, if you live on the last end, you'll all be interested in other areas. We'll probably just have a little, uh, you know, workshop during that event as well. So the point, the, the whole goal of this is to get, um, as much information out to a lot of city leadership and planning boards and commissioners. So, um, hopefully then from then we can kind of scale down, get the data out to as many, uh, public meetings as we can after that. But yeah, that's definitely something that's really exciting. So bring it up to that. Yeah. And also just, I mean, I won't spoil the data, but there is a lot there that I think would be very useful. Um, and specifically with Marquette County. Yeah, I just, there's a lot of numbers that have been thrown out, but I think it's just important for people to know how to read the information, how to interpret it. I'll put next up so we can focus on.
I would say if you, uh, can attend that meeting, we can maybe have a session here at the planning commission. The last time the dark market analysis was done, it was twenty sixteen. At the time, there was nobody providing any kind of analysis of it. I didn't find it all that difficult to understand. For what it's for. But it's, it's a, it's really good information. Other thing I'd like to say is, um, I've kind of got rhino skin from, you know, doing public service for as long as I have. So I'm not going to be offended by Wayne saying we don't do our own work here. Like we copy things from people all the time. But I'll point out that we created our own, um, regulatory scheme for, uh, regulating short-term rentals. We were one of the first cities in the state to do that. We were sort of a benchmark for the rest of the state after we created those for short-term rentals. We also created our own, uh, recreational marijuana regulations in a very timely fashion. She were a big part. I get kind of pissed off when people say stuff like that because I'm not, I said I had rhino skin, but I, I don't, I guess. I, I take a little offense to that, but I, I understand where Wayne's coming from. It, I understand that side of it. We don't want to make it more difficult for people to, to do business in Marquette or locate in Marquette. Um, and we do, uh, I think a good job. You guys work hard on, on what we do. I mean, it's a team effort, right? And, and I think we ought to be proud of the work we do because we're constantly referenced by people around the state as lead. I get, I talk to people all the time. They call us and what are you guys doing on this? Or, or how do you do that? We did look at other communities for examples, but I think we got to take some pride in the fact that we're, we're doing things pretty well without always having to copy what other people are doing. But you got to look at, uh, some of the, some of the things happening in other places. So we have some sense of where we're at. Thanks.
You're grateful for the work you guys do. It means our job, you guys are really, provide us with ten million iterations of things. Then everyone, our team is there, but we are very grateful for the work you guys do. All right, with that, we will adjourn this meeting at seven twenty five.